Good evening. Welcome to the April 13th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us in our audience, and we're glad to have those that are at home watching on television. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we honor our country and our nation's flag with the pledge, followed then by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, an individual with liberty and justice for all. And now our moment of silence. Thank you. And as always, board members, I will remind you to remove your mask when you're speaking for the television audience. All right, you have received a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a few communications tonight. First of all, we celebrated Assistant Principals Week last week. It was National Assistant Principals Week, and they hopefully got lots of accolades and pats on the back and everything else that we could give them for the job that they do for us every day. So we appreciate them tremendously. Also, Murfreesboro Kiwanis Club provided several of our school nurses with items last, two weeks ago, I guess, to stock their clinics. We appreciate the Kiwanis Club and all that they've done for us and for those clinics. Mitchell Nielsen would like to thank ETC Gymnastics for working with our students during PE class. The kids and the teachers had so much fun during that class. Also, Farm Bureau just made a donation of over $1,000 to the City Schools Foundation. That money was earmarked for backpack food and our child bus, so we appreciate our community members supporting us. The Farmer Educators received a large donation of soil from the coast of Maine and Kelton's for their spring garden beds. So that was very unusual for us to get something all the way from Maine, and we're very excited about that, and we thank Kelton's for being our local supplier. City Schools Foundation Excellence in Education, which is an outdoor experience this year, will be held at Cannonsburg on May 1st. We hope to see all of you there. It's going to be a great event, outdoors and socially distanced. Congratulations to Mr. Duke, who's now Dr. Duke, and Kenny Holt, who is one of our Assistant Principals, on receiving their doctorate degrees this month. We are very proud of them, and I know we have several teachers within the district who also receive their doctorates. Kindergarten registration is going on now, as is pre-K. So we want to encourage folks, if they have a four-year-old and looking at pre-K, to certainly look at our pre-K program. That registration this week is going on at the Head Start. And then our kindergarten registration is online right now. It's for five-year-olds, so if you're five before August 15th, you are eligible for kindergarten. Those are both for Murfreesboro City residents. Our Teacher of the Year celebration will be held on Monday, April 26th, at the Hobgood Gymnasium. A little bit of a change of events, so we can be a little bit more socially distanced this year. It will be a great celebration nonetheless, and we're looking forward to having them and hosting them and celebrating them on the 26th. Our sixth-grade spelling bee is with Read to Succeed. It's actually this Friday, and it's going to be here in the chamber, so you can watch it live. And we're wishing all of our sixth graders luck in that spelling bee, and we appreciate Read to Succeed and all they do with our children. Congratulations to Mitchell Nielsen, John Pittard, and Salem Elementary on receiving Nashville Predator Grants. There may be a few more schools that receive those. They just received the emails yesterday, so I may have not gotten all of the details yet, but we are very happy that the Predators are giving us quite a few fun projects or money for fun projects coming up. And then we're going to celebrate our RTI 2B as a district, but I'm going to wait for Vanderbilt to come to do a big celebration. I know that is on your agenda, but just as a brief part of it, we do want to recognize that we are one of three districts in Tennessee to have every school recognized by Vanderbilt and the Tennessee Behavior Support Program. So our folks are doing a tremendous job, and it takes a lot of work to be recognized, so to have all of your schools in the district recognized is a huge, huge event. And those are your communications, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. I want to say one thing. It is very evident by the donors that we have, the sponsors that we have, it's very evident by the teachers we have, the staff we have in Murfreesboro City Schools, that we are a very, very good school system and very well-respected school system. And for anybody to think anything different, they need to do a little background work to find out more. I congratulate everybody in this school system for a job well done and a system that is recognized statewide and some national recognition we've gotten. So I'm very proud to be a part of, and I'm sure this board is as well, and I want to thank all of those that are involved. All right, consent items. We have a motion to approve the consent items.
I so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any question or discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Action items. Board Policy 6.201, compulsory attendance.
Yes, good evening, board. So we have some minor changes to some policies we wanted to bring before you tonight. Board Policy 6.201 outlining compulsory attendance ages has been reviewed and updated to align with the current law. The only changes to this was correcting verbiage used within the policy.
Okay. We have a motion to approve Policy 6.201.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms.
Barton.
Barton, thank you, ma'am. My mind goes blank sometimes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next item.
All right, homeschool policy 6.202. Board Policy 6.202 outlining homeschool requirements, again, has been reviewed and updated to align with current law. Minor changes in the wording were made around a parent's ability to hire a tutor and clarifying that attendance records for homeschool students must be provided to the district at the end of each school year.
We have a motion to approve Policy 6.202 homeschools.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, though, just after we approve this. That's fine. My question is, homeschooling, we're doing homeschooling, we're doing virtual, we're doing so many different aspects of learning. Does homeschool count in that whole thing as far as what's going on with testing and all of the ingredients that go into the?
Yes, to clarify and to make sure everyone that's listening understands as well, because you talked about remote learning or virtual learning, and those are our students who are enrolled in our school system, who are learning at home due to the pandemic right now. Homeschooling, they actually register with our office. Mr. Lyles oversees that. That may be with a private homeschool, it may be with Umbrella School. Those students and their parents are responsible for that education. The policy does require that at fifth grade, those students come in and have to take that test and take our state testing. So this year, Dr. Osborne, Mr. Lyles will be working to notify those homeschool parents that they are required to come in and take the ten-ready assessment.
Okay, so there's no crossing or graying of the lines between homeschool and virtual learning or any of those?
No, sir.
It's totally unique, they come in and make their application to do homeschooling.
Yes, and we did see quite an increase in number of that this year, obviously with the pandemic. I know we've talked about that before. Mr. Lyles shared with me yesterday as we were looking, we've had about an increase, about 265 homeschool students this year. We are expecting many of those to transition back into our district next year, and we're working now with them as well to make sure they know registration is going on, that they can go ahead and get those students registered and get them back in the school quickly so we can plan accordingly.
Good, okay, thank you.
Mr. Saddles?
They brought up a question to me. The ten-ready scores that they get at fifth grade, those are just for benchmarking for homeschool? Just basically to make sure that the parents that are homeschooling are doing what they need to do so that the students that are homeschooled are pretty much on par with our students. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, Policy 6.303, bus safety and child conduct.
Yes, Policy 6.308 outlining bus safety and conduct. Again, we've reviewed and updated to specify that transportation changes involving the school bus must be submitted to the Transportation Department before a student is allowed to proceed with that change.
Okay. Any questions pertaining to the policy? We have a, I'm sorry, Ms. Goff?
I was wanting to know if this policy is in the student handbook.
Yes, each individual school has bus conduct in their school handbook, and then in our parent handbook on our website, all this bus conduct information is listed as well.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve Policy 6.308, bus safety and conduct?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Saddles. Any question, discussion? All in favor of the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
All right, Board Policy 6.311 regarding the care of school property was reviewed and updated, clarifying that the property may belong to the district and/or the school board. Legal citation was also corrected on that policy.
Okay. Any question on policy pertaining to school property? Have a motion to approve Policy 6.311?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Saddles. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of security bond for the new finance director, Ms. Williams.
Yes, according to Board Policy 2.600, employees who handle money shall be bonded in order to indemnify the school system against the loss of any funds. The board actually determines the amount of the bond, given consideration to the total amount of money and/or property that's handled in each school. The proposed security bond we are recommending approval of was calculated based off formulas that are provided to us by our insurance agency.
Okay. Any question or discussion on the security bond?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richardson?
Do you believe that amount to be appropriate?
Yeah, we have, that works with, like I said, our insurance agency gives us that formula, and we're going off that. It is an increase from what we've seen in previous years based on our increase in revenues and looking at that formula.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, any other questions? Have a motion then to approve the security bond?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Formal bid on Discovery School Track.
Yes, I am so excited to be talking again about our Discovery School Track. I said, I'm not sure, we've had, we've talked about, I think, every board meeting I've had so far, so we'll keep it going, but we are excited to announce that bids for the Discovery Walking Track were received and opened on Wednesday, April 7th. A total of three bids were received, and we are recommending approval of the lowest bid submitted by Sessions Paving.
Okay. Mr. Ballard?
As this bid process works out, do we have any experience with Sessions Paving? Do we have any history with them? Do we know their abilities?
Yeah, and that is something we can look at. We are working closely with the city project manager on this, and they worked with Ms. Williams and Ms. Sally in our office in this bidding process as well. I do not know the answer to that exact question, but I can find that out for you.
Yeah, I would hope somewhere in the process they're saying, okay, this is not just a low-ball number and get a new person on board that we end up paying more for.
Absolutely, and we are not required to go with the lowest bid, but with the best bid. And so, working with the bidding process, this is the one that the city and our team looked at as the most appropriate one to go with.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
Mr. Saddles?
Is Sessions local? Are they here? I'm not familiar with Paving.
No.
I don't know these places.
Is Sessions local? Yeah, I will check into that.
I'm interested to know.
They are, they're in Nashville.
In Nashville?
All right. The bid has been presented. We have a motion to approve the bid from Sessions.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any other discussion or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Policy 2.703 audits.
Yes, so Board Policy 7.203 states that when an administrative change occurs during the fiscal year and the position is responsible for the expenditure of funds, a special audit of accounts shall be conducted. The policy does give the board discretion on how extensive this special audit should be. Considering we are closing in at the end of the fiscal year, the board can determine to allow for the annual audit, which will begin on May 1st, to serve as the special audit.
And what is the pleasure of the board? Mr. Richardson?
A question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. If we were to conduct two audits, how much money would that cost our city school system?
So we have talked to our audit firm, and they are giving us a price of around $5,000 to $10,000 to do the second audit. The special audit was the price range they quoted us in. We did speak with them about this regarding putting it forward, and that was the price that they gave us. That would require a budget amendment as well.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Moore?
And if we do this as part of our annual audit, are there additional things that would be included in that? Does that make the cost of the annual audit increase?
So they did say they could do some dual testing procedures if we move forward with wrapping it into that audit. That was the recommendation of the audit firm as well, is that we roll it in there. We will have to look and see if there would be an additional cost that was not mentioned in our communication, but we can find that out.
I'm assuming it would not be as much as.
No, no.
That's going back.
It would not.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Saddles?
I'm satisfied that we can, and I guess this discussion is if we want to just do this in the May audit, which to me seems the most responsible thing to do, rather than to haul out a whole another $10,000, I mean, to do another audit, to turn around and do the same thing again in May. I think, I think, I don't know if I need to put that in the form of a motion.
You will.
What we are, then my motion, I move to use the May audit for this special audit that we are looking at doing as a cost-saving measure.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any other question or discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Okay. Approval of budget amendments and transfers. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to see you. And before you, we have some budget amendments, and the first budget amendment is a revenue budget amendment, and I wanted to take just a minute and introduce you to some of these revenue accounts. This is not, we're not budgeting or recording any new revenue. What we're doing is moving it out of some existing accounts into a newer state-approved revenue account. The new accounts that we'll be using are actually more descriptive and more transparent, so we can look at the revenue code description, and it says coordinated school health, and we know that that $100,000 is used only for the coordinated school health grant. And I wanted to take just a second, like I said, to introduce you to that, because as we start talking about next year's budget, we'll also be talking about revenue, and these numbers will, these revenue account numbers will be part of next year's budget as well. So there's also some expenditure budget amendments, and I'm happy to entertain or answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Ms. Williams?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you believe that all those expenditures are reasonable and necessary?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need to have a motion to approve these amendments to the budget.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
What?
Okay. Reports and information?
All right.
Director's update?
Yes, sir. Want to take just a few minutes and update everyone on a few things we have going on in our school system as we kind of look to a very busy time ahead of us over the next couple of months. So first of all, and I did forego saying this when we talked about the Discovery Track, but as you are aware, the city council did vote at their last minute to, at the last meeting to contribute funds to this project as well. So we appreciate the council's contribution to the project, and we know that our entire community will benefit from that walking track that will be open to all of Murfreesboro. So we are very thankful for that. I did want to take just a minute and talk about summer school and give you an update on where we are on this venture. As you are aware, this was something that we were planning as a district early in this school year, and then the state came and, as they often did, followed our lead and required all districts to do it. So we are excited. We closed our registration as of last Friday, and we currently have 2,000 students who have submitted a registration form for our program. And we have, I'm sorry?
Wasn't our goal like half that?
Yes, it was. Yes, so that very much exceeded our goal. What was the exact goal?
700.
750, yeah. So we are excited. We have 2,000 students who have submitted the registration form for our program. We also, and I'm very pleased about this, and it just, again, speaks to the caliber of teacher we have, we have 200 teachers slated to teach in some capacity this summer for our students. This is an amazing opportunity we have for our community and for our students, and we're very excited about it. So where we kind of currently are in the process is we are finalizing exact locations for which schools. Obviously, with this many students, we're really thinking strategically about where to place those students to make it most accessible to our parents and to still do the work we need to do in our schools over the summer. So we are, our goal is to get this information around exact locations out to parents by April 19th. Any questions on summer, yes, ma'am?
Ms. Barton?
No questions, just a comment. One, thank you so much, Sherri. I know you and your group have had a lot to do with summer school and the recruiting, and I just want to really thank the teachers who've signed on for this after an incredibly difficult year of teaching. They care enough about those kids getting caught up that they're willing to give half their summer as well. And I just think that says so much about our teachers and the service that they provide for our children within and with and outside of their regular job duties.
Yes, we're, like I said, overwhelmed by their response, and we're excited about that.
Again, showing an exemplary system in staff. Thank you, that's great.
Is someone arguing with you about this, or I just had to ask?
Mr. Chairman, a comment, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Duke?
Yes.
I just want to express my extreme gratitude to the city council for recognizing just how important our city schools are and contributing to that and working together with us and with your leadership, and thank all of those teachers who have done such an extraordinary job. As Ms. Barton has said, it just speaks to the volume and caliber of what this system is. So thank you for what you've done, and thank you to the city council.
All right, next is on ten-ready testing, so it is that time of year in the spring, so ten-ready state testing for all second through sixth graders will begin officially on April 21st. So that's our kind of official start date, which is next week. Schools are setting their own schedules, and not all grade levels will be testing at the same time. We are also, and this is very important, working with our distance learners to set up schedules for these students to come into the school and test in a safe way that they're very comfortable with as well. But this will provide some important benchmark information for us as we go into next year in our strategic planning, but I wanted to put that date on your calendar that will happen beginning next week. All right, finally, ESER 3.0, which is the latest round of federal funding that has been sent our way, has been awarded to us with the bill that was passed by President Biden. The amount is a little over $12 million, $12,671 that is coming to us as emergency relief funding. This is in addition to the ESER 2.0 money, which you have previously approved. So we have already started working as a team to identify and prioritize this money. Obviously, as we say, anytime we're using federal money, it is very restricted in what we can do with that. So our job as a team has really been to look at it, to identify our needs, and to maximize this funding, what really is this kind of once-in-a-lifetime funding. So the, we have had multiple meetings on this already. You'll be hearing more about what we are intent and our proposed plan is next week at our budget work sessions on that. The application is formally due to the state by June 1st. Our goal is to get that in sooner than that, but I wanted to put those dates on your calendar as well.
I have one question. Salaries cannot be part of that money, right?
So positions can, allowable positions can be part of that money.
Okay.
And you brought up the work session of the budget. Now, I'm here to remind, that's on the 20th and 21st of next, which is next week, beginning at 4:00 at the central office.
Yes, sir. And we did provide you your budget notebooks tonight. You have those, so you'll have time to review those before next week.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else? Mr. Ballard?
In the ten-ready, back on the ten-ready subject, all the remote learners, everyone has to come in and do it onsite, do the testing onsite, right?
Yes, and we are providing multiple options. The schools are working specifically with those parents, and this is not a new practice. So we've done some district-level benchmarking, and we've asked those families to come in during that district-level benchmarking. So our schools have done a great job of making sure those families are comfortable coming in, that they are spread out, that they're safe, just like we do with all of our protocols for our students. So yes, we are, all students do have to come in and test, even if they are a remote learner.
So, and a Daily News Journal article informed me a lot about what I'm asking questions about.
Okay.
The, that may be a dangerous thing, but anyway, the ten-ready goal for testing response is 80%.
That is correct.
And the remote learners, everyone counts in that pot for 80%.
That is correct.
How do we feel about achieving 80%?
We feel very confident with this. We've had a lot of conversations with our administrative staff about this. Ms. Arnett and her team, who oversee testing, have been working really hard to provide parents that opportunity to say, you know, let's come in where you're comfortable, your students are comfortable, we can make sure we have this actionable data that we can do stuff with next year as students transition back into the classroom. We are doing some alternative options. If parents want to reach out, if they're concerned about testing in the school, they can reach out to their administration about that, but we feel very good about that. And that 80% is very important, that we hit that 80%.
Well, I hope we can, and I hope we get, I know there's a lot of debate about how reliable this year's ten-ready numbers would be, or the scores will be, and I guess we'll have that battle after it, after it's over, but some are recommending, you know, no harm, no harm, no foul this year, just like last year.
Well, and that's really where that 80% comes in. If the state guidance that the special session passed says if we reach that 80%, then we